Our, what is today's date is November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We are here for the Revere Local School District's work session. Mr. Verdyne, please call the roll.
Here, this is Allen.
Here.
Here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So before we start presentations, a couple of things I want to touch on. We had, obviously, an election last week. We will, uh, um, next month say goodbye to a couple of folks. And in January, we will welcome two others. So we will wait to talk about that at that time. The other thing I wanted to touch on was, obviously, Michael, myself, Rick, and Courtney were down at OSBA. We had a good time. Went through some sessions. Unfortunately, this morning, there was an accident involving Tuskegee Valley. A bunch of kids were on a bus, and I don't know the outcome. So just say some prayers, obviously, keep them in our thoughts, and hopefully, the best to all the families. So, uh, Mr. Shanker.
Yes, thank you, uh, for the opportunity to, to talk to you.
For how long? I, I think you said to me it's a...
You said, "Keep it under fifty minutes."
Okay.
We'll try to do that.
I think you meant fifty.
We've been, uh, working on a website redesign for the last couple of months. And just wanted to give you an update on where we are with that project and, and kind of what the status is. I've looked back, I think it's been seven or eight years since Revere has done a website redesign. Certainly predates my experience with the district. Typically, schools do that every three to five years, just to refresh the look and, and give the site a new look. It's also a good time for us because the software that we're using, which is Blackboard Web Community Manager, is being discontinued in two thousand and twenty-five. So this allows us to kind of be ahead of the curve a little bit, to get the support from the company when they're not overwhelmed with doing a lot of transitions. So really, the timing worked out really well. We started this process in September, working with the district communications team and soliciting some feedback from our administrators and from our secretaries on the current website, the things that they like about the current website, the things they value there, also the things that frustrate them about the current website and the things they'd like to see improved as we move along. So I just want to show you a few things, kind of highlighting where we are. For the most part, we're trying to keep things pretty familiar. We don't want people to be overwhelmed with, "Everything's in a different place, and I can't find anything." That's not the point of this. We want to try to keep things looking as familiar as possible while making improvements to the site. So, you know, the fir-, the first page, when we get, we get to the homepage, it looks very familiar. We updated the colors, believe it or not. The website was sold and predated all of the design work that we did with the building projects. So the colors were actually wrong, so we'll fix that. Still have a space there at the top of every page for a video or a slideshow to highlight the good things that are going on in our district. We kept the navigation structure very simple and very similar to what we have now. Where we start to see improvements is moving down the page. We added an icon bar right there under that, that video. And those are the things that someone new to the district or new to the website who's Googled Revere Schools and, and brings up this website, those are the things that typically they're looking for. Those are things like, "How do I register my kid?" "What time is the concert tonight?" or "The athletic event." "How do I get ahold of my kid's teacher, or building principal, or counselor?" You know, "How do I pay school fees?" "Can you point me to athletic information?" "Are there job opportunities?" So those are things that, that we felt people are, are looking for and often have a hard time finding. We wanted them to be front and center. Below that, the district highlights section are, are things that are very familiar. Typically, we highlight news events with those, those big icons with graphics on them, and we're going to continue to do that. We've expanded from the three that we have now, that we can show on the screen at a time, to six, and we, we have the ability to add more if we need to. One of the changes that we made here was to have better coordination between the district page and the building pages. You know, currently, if we want something on the district site that we also want to put on the, on the school sites, we have to add it in all of those places. And so what we can do now with the new site is, you know, something like, uh, the first one there is Friday, Friday Night Youth, which was, was coordinated with the football games. We can post it on the district site and say, "Also put this on Richfield's homepage and on Bath's homepage." And so we can be selective about which schools that appears on. And at the building level, they can promote things to the district level as well. So high school's going to put out a news item about, uh, celebrating the soccer team. They think that that's something that we should be promoting on the district website as well, and they can just add a tag, and it gets added here automatically. So it allows us to better put things in multiple places for the best visibility. Scrolling down the page, we actually didn't have any calendar events on the current webpage. And calendars can be tricky because they can be overwhelming very quickly because there are a lot of events going on all the time. If you put all of the school events on there, it, the type gets so small, you can't even read it. So what we decided to do here is to show a sliding bar of events over the next three days, and it only shows three days at a time. Currently, that's, that's like fifteen events. When you get into heavy athletic seasons, you know, there, there are times when there are fifteen or twenty athletic events alone in a particular day, let alone all of the other things going on. But we, we felt if we have three days, you can see what's happening today, what's happening tomorrow, when is, um, that lacrosse game? What time does my kid need to be there for their choir concert? You know, what is, wasn't, was there something about it in service day that I needed to know about? So those things will be there. And then under that, there's an icon where, where you can go to the school calendars and have a calendar very similar to what we have now, where you can select which schools you're interested in and see all of those events either in a, a month view like this or have a week view, seeing a week at a time, or a day view where it just shows, you know, lists all of the events in a particular day. That's very similar to what we have now. There's a tool, it's hard to read there, it's in the upper right corner, where you can, you can click and select which buildings you want. And, you know, so if you have a student at the middle school and a student at, at Richfield, you can select just those buildings and hide the ones from the other, other schools. Yes?
You had, the district has had some difficulties with calendars. I know we've had some concerns about that. Can you remind us what that is, and does this solve that, or?
We have a Google Calendar, a public Google Calendar for every school, and that makes it easy for the school administrators, school secretaries, to manage their events in their calendar, you know, on their computers like they normally would, and those events then propagate to the website. And so people can actually subscribe to those calendars directly or see them here. This just allows us to overlay those different calendars and, and allow people to really select and dial in things that they, uh, that they're really interested in. The, the piece that I'm, I'm struggling with now is the athletic piece because every team has its own calendar. And so trying to coordinate that, and, and I've reached out to the company that helps us manage that and, and working with On Seeker, trying to come up with a way to bring those in as well. So you can say, "At least, let's see games, competitive contests, and maybe not have all of the practices." You don't need practices for every sport for every day because that, that can be overwhelming. So it, it's really a challenge to give people the information that they really need without overwhelming.
Thank you.
One of the things that we've also struggled with on the current website is dealing with languages. And we have an increasingly diverse population among our families. And so we need to be able to provide information in the languages that our families speak at home. And so we've added a tool called Lead Lot. You'll probably never hurt hear that name before. It's a software behind the scenes that handles language translation for websites. And so in the lower right corner, you can select the language that you want. And these are the languages that we currently see in our school district. In addition to English, we have some Spanish, we have Ukrainian, we have Hindi, we have Arabic. And you can select those languages, and, and as you see there, I think that's Hindi. It translates all of the things on the page. And I have a hard time trying to figure out if that's correct. I know that it translates, in some languages, it translates "revere" as "respect" because it literally translates the word "revere." So we're, we're stro-, this tool allows us to actually edit those translations. If we knew Arabic, or Hindi, or Punjabi, or Ukrainian, we could, we could go in and say, "Yep, I need you to translate this word this way." And we may be able to do that with things like proper nouns, things like, like PTA, it does not have, you know, PTA is not a word, right? So, um, this tool allows us to do that and gives us some more flexibility in how we can manage languages. The other thing that we really want to focus on is making sure that our website looks good on computers, looks good on tablets, we have thousands of iPads, but also looks good on mobile phones because, you know, more than half of our website traffic is on a phone. And so traditionally, we, I design on a computer, right? And the web designers are using computers, and you've got these big monitors, and you're designing for something that looks good there and not always thinking about, "What does that look like on a three-and-a-half-inch screen?" And so we're making sure as we go through this, as we, as we design things, as we lay things out, that it also looks good on mobile devices and adapts based on the size of the screen automatically. So that's another thing that, that we're focusing on. Timeline-wise, we've gone through identifying the goals, the project kickoff. The theme design is, is pretty well set now. We're still playing with a loo-, some elements and how things look. Navigation and layout, we have a pretty good handle on where our menus are and how those are going to look. Currently, the company is working on content migration, taking all the stuff that's on the current website, putting it in the new, new website. And then we'll begin the process of, of reviewing all of that, making sure that the content is correct, the links all work, everything is up to date. And then bringing our staff members, we have more than twenty-five staff members in the district who have responsibilities for maintaining various parts of the website. And so we need to get them up to speed. As soon as we have content in there, we'll get them in and, and get some training done so that they can hit the ground running with the updates that they're going to need to do as soon as we launch this.
What's your launch date?
Launch date is December twenty-seventh. When you look at, at winter break, you think, "There's, there's two weeks there, we've got all this time." And, and actually, when you look at the dates, that's really the only date that works. You don't want to, you don't want to do it right as school is out, you don't want to do it on Christmas Eve, you don't want to cut, you know, have an issue on a Friday afternoon where you're working through the weekend trying to fix it. That's, that's kind of the perfect date to launch the website. It gives us a couple of days after that before school starts so that if anything major goes awry, we can, we can jump in and, and take care of it. That's, that's what our plan is from, or has been from the beginning, that we're launching on December twenty-seventh. So we'll be ready to go.
Great.
Is that fifty minutes?
Is the progress book, is that a tab in there?
It is. I feel that it's one of those icons.
Okay, it's just under one of those, where you could, okay.
It will be on the building pages. One of the things that we talked a lot about is, is the audience because we have so many different audiences looking for different things. And what we realize is that our parents typically go to the building pages where they have kids. And so that will be something that's, that's more highlighted there than at the district level where we have community members and reporters and alumni and, you know, lots of, of a much wider audience.
That's the first thing I hit when I go.
I use the app.
So that's what I use, I use the app, and I hit your little "more," and the progress book's right on the right.
The app doesn't change, right, the progress book?
No, progress book stays the same. The mobile app will, there's actually a new version of the mobile app coming too. And making that integrate with the website is part of, of this project, but we haven't gotten to that yet.
Yeah, it's much cleaner.
I really like those tabs that you have, like the most looked-at things, probably that, I really like that.
And that was... That was super important to our communications committee as well. When we were just looking at themes, they said, "We've got to have these icons," so eliminate all of the things that don't have them.
It just saves a lot of searching for people who are trying to figure out where you would put it. Yeah, that's a great idea.
Whose school is that? Oh, that's Medina, okay.
I'm sorry.
The school right there is not Revere, I was wondering.
I thought I saw Medina on the stadium.
That's ours.
That's ours, what is that?
No, it's not ours.
That's not ours.
We don't, our stands aren't white.
They've got to be competing somewhere.
That was a competition.
Yeah.
I was going to say, that band is red, white, and blue, just like ours.
That is our band, yeah.
It's our band, it's just not our stadium.
They're competing somewhere for...
Okay, oh, that's weird.
Well, look on this back of the stands, it says Medina High School.
Oh, it does?
That's how you state it from...
Oh, you're right, it does.
That's a state competition.
Good eyes there.
I got new glasses.
I was going to say, "This is Revere." No, that's really not Revere.
This is Revere Band. This is Revere Band.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, John.
Uh, next on the agenda, Board of Education agenda. We do not have anything at this time. Mr. Verdyne, treasurer's agenda?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, Dr. Teff's superintendent's agenda.
We don't want that to happen. Okay. We'll, uh... I want to start with the profile. You've seen a draft of this a couple of weeks ago. We're, we're really getting close. This is one of those documents that Claudia, Diana, you've had probably for a decade prior to COVID, in various shapes and forms. And it was once called Quality Profile. We're now calling it the District Profile. And we, what, the why behind this is, if you are moving into the district, what's a one place? So think about the web, you just got a little drive-through of the web. Where would this sit? That, and it probably would sit in many different places. It's the one snapshot that says, "This is about everything I could know about Revere" without looking like War and Peace. So like John has looked at, the analytics behind the website, of where our family's going. We're trying to be as responsive to what do people need to know. I don't know necessarily if it's for our families. Our three thousand families know about a lot of this. I think they might see it, might like it. But for the seventy percent of the electorate that doesn't necessarily engage with our schools every day, this is another example for, for them. So we'll have a, a table of contents, and I, I want you to think about two things. Once it will live on the website, but it is the ability to be printed, that if we went someplace that just did not have the technology, we needed a leave behind for the audience, some of the technology will not work, as you, as I'll show you. But, uh, we think it, it'll be pretty multifaceted. So I'm just going to run through it really quickly. We've got an opportunity to introduce the board, we'll introduce the administration. We talk about how the district is organized with the, the organizational chart. This is a bit of high-level district figures. So you see number of employees, general fund budget, ACT scores, performance index scores, enrollment. Now here's where, if you, we click this, which many of you have all seen, the state of the school's address, this will play the state of the school's address. Obviously, if we have a printed version, it's a little tougher to make happen. Also, we, we have a QR code there. We have transportation on the top, just to talk a little bit about what does transportation look like and feel like every day, just to continue to remind people that, you know, we drive over two thousand miles a day, every day, make over two thousand stops a day, every day. Our food service program, eleven hundred meals a day. It's one of the larger restaurants, I think, in town. And we're doing that for about three dollars a meal. I think this is just, again, information high level for our community to see about, about the school district. Vision of a Minuteman, again, if you play that, there's some information there. Our strategic plan, our district leadership team. And at the bottom, you'll see where our school growth plans are. So if you click that QR code, that would take you to the website where you could actually open Richfield's School Improvement Plan, Bath's Plan, Middle School Plan, et cetera. And now we have each building that we will also represent. And these are the ones that we're still working on. We're reaching out to the principals to get some information. The high school is probably, has more information right now just because we have that information here at Central Office. But we'll have a page dedicated to, to Richfield, one for Bath, the middle school, the high school. You know, you see the enrollment, we'll have student-to-teacher ratios there. Parents are always asking, "What is the start time? What is, what, what are the hours of that building?" We have that on every page. This is data just on our high school. So we'll have our national merit, scholarships earned, CCP information, how many graduates... So this is all from the class of twenty, twenty-three. Here are all of the course offerings. And if you hit that QR code, it'll take you to a document that they call their Pathways to Success. How does one course align with the next? What course should I be taking? If I take this in my freshman year, I can see the pathway of where that will be in their sophomore year, their junior year, their senior year. Great document that they have, they have worked on. We have a athletics page, just to talk about all the sports that we have, what season. Ton on fine arts, multiple pages for both, both visual and performing. There's all the clubs and extracurriculars that are available at the high school. This is the, uh, "What does it feel like to be a Revere student?" And it's bits and pieces that we've taken, it's really, it's great. And then we've got a whole section on communication, our social media that we offer, the print newsletter. Right now, it's Blackboard Connect, we'll see what that will be. Eventually, we'll probably be replacing that, is that correct?
Blackboard Connect is staying for now.
Okay. Blackboard Connect is what we often send all of our messages on, usually, with. Flyer Place. These are our partnerships, so we want to give our PTAs a presence. QR code, we take you to the PTA pages. And then some other community partners that we have. At the very bottom, that's the license plate that RSF has. You can click that, and it'll take you right to the BMD, and you can order away. So that's, that's a quick where we are now. What we're really working on before we release this will be the individual building pages. Once, I think, we get those up and running, we'll probably put this out there because it's a document that's going to be changing all the time. It's not one of those that is done, and we're going to edit it every first week of August. When things change, we'll edit it. ACT scores are taken, we get the results back, we'll update that. Enrollment changes, we'll update that probably quarterly. So just wanted to give you an idea of what the profile looks like from the last time that you had a chance to see it. And if you had any feedback at all, please let us know. We'd love to get your input and your voice before we end up loading that on the website. But we think sometime, uh, first part of December, we'll probably put that out on the website. Where, where will that be on, will that be under a tab on the website? You know, when it first goes out, it'll be right, right on the front, front page. It'll live in probably multiple places. Sometimes parents are like, "Where is that?" So you put it under the community section, you put it under the family section. It'll probably be one of the front and center, just like it is right, right now because it's brand new. It will probably be pretty, pretty different with that. And can you search that? There's a search bar, could you be able to search Revere District Profile, let me pull that up?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's awesome.
Did you say, Michael, on the parts where there's a video plays, if you print it, there's going to be a QR code there that would take them to that video?
Yes.
I think it looks great, it looks super professional.
Do we have Brenda to thank for, do, do we outsource, or is this all Brenda?
It's all Brenda.
She does a great job, that looks so professional.
Yeah, it does.
I love it, it looks really good.
Somebody's going to steal Brenda someday. Because she's such a...
Don't tell anybody about her.
Brenda watches every one of our meetings, and you can...
Brenda, no.
Hi, Brenda! Thank you!
Brenda, no.
And then, Mr. Malick, I just wanted to distribute that these are just reciprocal dates for the board for next year, just to start to get you to thinking about that so we can look at whatever conflicts we may or may not have. There you go. You ask, and look at what you get.
Wow. Ask for something better next time. Dates for the calendar, that's all you got, Ted?
This is a public record now, but I want you to know that this is, has not been board-approved. So if there's a date on here and we end up changing it, I want you to know, man.
You sent those out!
I did.
It gets approved at the board's decision.
This is just a proposal.
Mr. Malick, you ready to jump to the regular agenda?
We are. Sorry, I was looking at your dates.
Those are always the first thing you do is look at that and start thinking right now, "Hmm, is that going to work?"
Okay, we'll go ahead and go right into the agenda for next week.
A very usual beginning. I, I do want to thank Claudia for the attempt to try to get our soccer team here right away. And it just, we already had invitations out, families are planning on this. But thanks for that suggestion. We will have the soccer team as the only recognition because of the size in at your December meeting. And obviously, we want to celebrate and recognize their amazing performance. But we'll have a typical student recognition this month. We will have a curriculum presentation. This is under the Prescribed Curriculum Statute for the higher revised code thirty-three thirteen point six oh, if you're ever wanting to look at that. It's fabulous reading. You will have a presentation from Mrs. Carrigan, Guidance Counselor, Mrs. Pruschnicky, Guidance Counselor, and Mrs. Roach on the two pieces of curriculum that we are looking to recommend. We have shown you the state's website. I'm thinking this will be DEW at this point, and all of the acceptable curriculums that are in there. Our, our guidance counselors have done a wonderful job of vetting all of those. And they are looking to bring to you, and you'll see that later in the agenda. Not, that'll be a first reading only, second and final reading in December, and you'll have a presentation prior to that so you know exactly what that curriculum looks like, feels like, and sounds like. And that curriculum does come with an opt-out. And we'll just need to be super transparent with our families. If they, if this is something that needs to happen at home, they just, we'll just need to opt out of that. And then we'll have the Board of Education come in and help take care of the students that are not a part of that at that time. I think that falls under the revised code, or check that, President specifically.
Okay.
Okay.
We don't have, uh, nothing on Board of Agenda, Board of Education Agenda. Mr. Verdyne, do you want to touch on your stuff?
My, I, the only different type I might have is twice a year, you see the five-year forecast, and we present that, Revere Finance Committee already. It went very well, and it presents us in a very, very good situation going forward as a result of what I anticipate will be the outcome of the Summit County Property Reappraisal, which homeowners may not like as well as, I don't like it as well as a homeowner as I do as the treasurer for Revere.
You have two different hats there, right?
Let me, let me put it that way.
Just like the rest of us here, yes.
I really like it as treasurer, I don't like it as a property taxpayer. But it, uh, as you know, when we went for the substitute levy with our communities some years back in two thousand and seventeen, it was to position us for if there was ever inflationary growth, that the district would benefit more from it in the past. No one, myself included, ever anticipated we would have double-digit valuation increases in two thousand and twenty, and bigger double-digit increases in two thousand and twenty-three. We're looking at about a twenty-six percent, I think, overall for our district, different parts, different houses. Different parts, different houses will be different than that number I said, but the aggregate residential is about 26, commercial not nearly as high. So it, uh, between that and $1.2 million of additional state revenue in the current budget from the state, uh, it's, it's a big kick. It's a big kick in a really nice way, so.
Okay.
I think it, it forestalls, I know you've heard me each time talk about that in the past, I've said, you know, we need to be mindful of our spending, watch the revenues coming in, and we're gonna have to have a conversation about a levy. I'm gonna say that tonight and I'm gonna try not to say it next week because I don't think there's a levy on the horizon if those numbers play to be accurate. So, uh, as a taxpayer, you will be paying incremental increases as a result of valuation increases, but you, um, won't see us. We're already at 12 years from the last new operating levy and, and I think we're gonna go a, a good number more. So, it's a, it's a good situation. Again, I'll give you two answers. One is a taxpayer, one is a treasurer, so.
Thank you very much. Tonight, you're a treasurer.
I'm a treasurer tonight, that's correct.
As far as, uh, board member reports, I highly doubt I'll add anything on the Finance Audit Committee, given what Mr. Medina indicated, the, the meeting, uh, facility and grounds, Ms. Howard, Ms. Savage.
Probably not.
Okay. Ms. Stein, will you have anything legislative? Usually not at this time of year, yeah. Ms. Burke?
Uh, yes, CDC has a special meeting on Thursday night to approve.
I heard.
The grant, so I'll have the details of that next week.
Awesome. You'll have policy stuff, or you'll just wait till they come up?
A lot of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll just wait until they actually come up on the agenda?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Dr. Teff?
Just because so many of, of my agenda items and recommendations are pretty standard for this month, I plan on, on taking, if it's okay with you, 81A all the way through Abby's Agenda and Student Services, which, which would be three D and right above Other Businesses. On the Certified Licensed Personnel, uh, you'll just see us prepping for the winter. As you go into page three, there's Classified Personnel, um, and same thing, we're just getting ready for, for the winter. Under Student Services, we are asking for some additional hours. One of our employees, uh, three hours for one of our employees to help pay students with intensive needs to attend the dance. We do have a, a recommendation for home instruction, um, for a third grade student that is currently at home due to a medical condition. Then we have, uh, two items, uh, to support our families when it comes to, uh, in hearing impairment, uh, visual impairment. So we have, uh, ASL with Greenleaf Family Center and Cross Threat Solutions is a new company that you've not heard from before. It's, uh, Abby at Castle did a wonderful job of really digging in to find somebody that could support one of our families with, uh, uh, translation services and interpretation services. And that's gonna come through a company called Cross Threat. In, uh, Other Businesses, it's, uh, we'll ask you to approve the transition where we have to change all of our policies. It says ODE to DEW. Once you approve that, we'll work with our policy group to make that happen. And then I'll turn this over to Claudia, but we have, we have about 21 policies that came through Policy Committee, uh, and that's for our first reading. Claudia?
So Diana, how about if I, um, go from 6.58 to 7.08? I'll do the introduction of each of, the changes in each of those policies and then you do the, and the rest. But, um, any word more on 3.02? Did that ever get finished?
It did.
Okay, that'll be added to this.
It will not.
Claudia's doing the first reading.
I'll talk with you about that later.
She's doing that.
Same with Policy Committee.
Okay.
Okay.
I have a, I have an idea, but I'd wanna talk to the Policy Committee first.
Okay. Is that right, Diana?
Yeah. How mu- how much do you wanna re, are we gonna send out that summary we were gonna send?
I put that in last week's.
So did everybody see that? But I think too, because if we are, you know, introducing these to the community, it's not just the board.
But did all the board see it though?
I saw it, yeah.
Okay.
So then we can, um, do it from there.
Yeah, because a lot of them are brief changes.
Yeah, they're just words.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
And then, uh, 4C is the first reading for the curriculum that you will receive a presentation on earlier that evening. And that is the second step curriculum that our guidance counselors already are, are using. Specifically, they'll be looking, presenting lessons one and two to you. And then, uh, D and E, post-COVID, our baseball and softball teams, uh, are asking for permission to go to South Carolina as part of the Ripken Experience. And, uh, that has happened a lot in this district prior to COVID. We're happy to recommend that for them.
Very good. Is there any other questions on next week's agenda?
I do not anticipate the need for an executive session.
For next week? Okay, thank you. We do have a need to go into executive session this evening, though.
That is correct.
And that's to consider the employment and/or compensation of an employee. Are there any other topics, Dr. Teff? No? Okay. Uh, may I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Medina?
Mr. Hyde, this is Stein. This is Howard.
Yes.
Mr. Malik.
Yes.
This is Savage.
Yes.
It boards an executive session, uh, we will not have any action when we come out. So enjoy your evening.